I'd like to invite everyone to stand, please, for the place of the flag. You were spot on. Minutes of July 19th. We have a motion to approve the minutes of July 19th.
It's a move.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. We have a motion to approve.
It's a move.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the financial report? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, real quickly, we got a discussion with Beth Creek and Alicia Calhoun. They're gonna talk to us about the, I think this is about the Drug-Free Communities Coalition. All right, come on down.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to come here. So, we wanted to speak to the town because Cecil County has had a drug-free communities grant for nine years. They're going into year 10, and at the end of year 10, that grant will close out. It will not be renewable. And so, the suggestion has been made that a drug-free communities grant be sought for the town of Elton jurisdiction. Youth Empowerment Source, the agency that I lead, already holds a drug-free communities grant from the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy for the town of Northeast. So, we cannot be the fiscal agent for two grants at the same time, so we are not eligible to apply on behalf of Elton. And because we are in Elton, we would be a good entity to manage that. But, the Elton Alliance does have interest in being the managing agency. And they would then work with the Health Department to run that grant through the prevention services of the Cecil County Health Department. So, we didn't want to proceed any further. There have been talks about whether or not this next grant application should come from Cecil County government on behalf of the town of Elton, or from a town of Elton agency. And so...
Or from the town of Elton as a whole.
Or from the town of Elton itself, right. But, Elton Alliance, their board is willing to move forward with that process, but a decision needs to be made fairly soon. Because in order to apply next spring, they have to have been meeting for six months prior to that, have six months' worth of meeting minutes. So, there is a group that is prepared to begin meeting. But, the question that is in the air right now is, who will make the application? Will the application and the financial, the fiscal agent be the Elton Alliance? Will it be town of Elton if there's interest there, or will it be the county? So...
So, we are here to clarify or decide, or hear from you, if the town of Elton is interested in submitting that grant application and administering that, being the persuader for that, or not. And if the answer is no from the town of Elton, then certainly the Elton Alliance is willing to take that on. But then there's the question of that Cecil County is going to do that instead of us. But, our purpose here today is regarding you guys and the town of Elton's interest in managing that grant.
Full disclosure, I met with these two, and I think it's a great fit for the Elton Alliance to jump on board and manage this. I don't see where the town of Elton should be involved in managing this. How do you guys feel?
I'll compare with you at this point, because you're gonna need it, and secondly, you've already discussed the fact that it would not be in our best interest. And thirdly, she said that the Alliance would be interested in being the agent, so I would agree with moving forward and let that happen.
How you guys feel?
I would leave it in the hands of the Alliance.
Charlie said exactly.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't fall through. That's all I, make it happen. That's the bottom line.
You know, we'll, whether it's the Alliance or whether it's the county, the application we made now has to be up to the CDC, whether or not it is awarded. If it's not awarded for this coming year, perhaps we would apply again for the following year. But our goal will be to work towards that. And as I said, we have, yes, does have experience. We've been through this process. Actually, Chief Rogers was with us when we went through the process the first time. She was serving on our coalition that we operated, so she's a little bit familiar with our work in that regard. Drug Free Cecil is really, the youth coalition is an entity of Youth Empowerment Source. But Drug Free Cecil as a whole, all of the coalitions that work in Cecil County have such a strong reputation in Washington right now, that I think there would be very good odds of us receiving a grant through the Alliance for the town of Elton, for a coalition that would focus on youth substance prevention for the town of Elton.
What do you need from us?
Just, I just need a thumbs up from you, and then we're gonna move on to the county and make sure that we're not butting heads with them on this issue.
Thumbs up.
All right.
Yeah, I think it's great that the Alliance is stepping forward and offering to do that. That's nice.
Appreciate so much their willingness to get involved in this, because it's such a big issue we have every at the table. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna rearrange the agenda just a little bit. I had an email from Mr. Stuart Katzenberg, and I invited him to come up and make a, I'm gonna say make a plea about the collective bargaining. Mr. Katzenberg, come on down.
Jeremy from...
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Stuart Katzenberg, I'm the Director of Collective Bargaining and Growth with Aspen Council 3. We represent 45,000 public sector workers in the state of Maryland, city of Hagerstown, city of Cumberland, Baltimore City, Tacoma Park, soon to be the city of Salisbury, all over the state, as well as state, county, and school board employees, so public sector workers. Workers of the town of Elton have approached us, and so far, 73% of the town workers, non-police, have signed cards wanting collective bargaining, wanting a voice at work. Before I speak any further, I want to turn it over to one of the organized committee members, Jeremy, just to speak about why folks want this, and why we can work together to sort of have an on-ramp to do this efficiently, fairly, and quickly, so that they can have a voice at work.
Got it.
Hi, Jeremy.
My name's Jeremy Kipler. I work for Grounds Neatens at BPW. You know, I live, I live here in Elton, right in Washington Woods, with my wife and my family. You know, I wanna thank you guys for talking to us, but, you know, we hope to get your support and expand collective bargaining. That's what we want. Last meeting, we shared a letter with you guys with 41 signatures, and we have more than that on cards. It's collective, you know, this is what everybody here wants. And, you know, we're trying to improve our careers, the service here, and we're trying to make the town a better place. That's, that's the bottom line. And, you know, the letter we shared with you guys outlined what we were trying to do and our mission to do that. We want, you know, just transparency in the workplace and a collaborative, you know, effort between everybody. I think, you know, the letter outlined our mission as an organized group to have a cooperative and collaborative workplace, and, you know, foster transparency and communication about how to improve our work and make the town a better place to work and live. Again, this can only happen when employees have the right, not a fleeting gift, but the right to sit down as equals with management and come to a mutually beneficial situations, solutions, excuse me. To deny a charter amendment, you are risking employees leaving and finding jobs where they do have a voice, resulting in lower quality services and less effective workforce. However, when employees have a say in our working conditions, we can come, we become more efficient, safer, and we're developed procedures that improve the quality of our work. Pushing this issue to a referendum will prolong the inevitable by a year and a half with the same outcome. We want to focus on our work and provide the highest standard of services for the town and its residents now. We want to get to the table and start working health solutions alongside management. We are asking you to support us in our shared values. We have through, uh, excuse me, we have through the, through a process that allows for residents input and leads employees with the dignity and respect we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thanks, Jeremy. Look, you see the turnout from folks who took their great time to be here, that it's that important to them. Obviously, the town has a collective bargaining law that covers police, so, and that's been working. We're simply asking that there's a democratic process that allows folks expeditiously to then choose, right? We're still asking that workers will have to vote if they want a union or not. The question is, how quickly do we get to that vote? And by you already having regulations in the charter that you can simply amend by changing from police employees to all employees, that would expedite the process for employees to vote and say, yes or no, we want a union. And they'll decide, right? It's not up for me to decide. It would just like an expedited process, because as Jeremy indicated, if we were to rerun the referendum route, which is, the town has already said, we support collective bargaining for police. It's just expanding it now. Like, the concept of collective bargaining is an anathema to the town. We think this would be the fairest, quickest process to get, I think, where everyone wants to go. I think Jeremy did say, which we have heard from workers, which is why we wanted to come to you to try to keep people together, is there is competition. We're in a tight labor market. Folks in the county over, in Hartford County, have collective bargaining. The school board has collective bargaining there as well. Folks aren't worried about their voice at work, and they're starting, they don't wanna make tough choices. So, we know that you are thoughtful about this and have been putting a lot of thought into it over the last few months, and that we ask that, we work with you in concert to amend the charter, which creates a process that still, there's public input, but there's opposition, and notice for us to work through this together, the public, workers, and the commission, to get this done. And then, hopefully, you know, if this were happening soon, by the end of the year, then there'd be a vote of the workers to decide if they want a union or not. And then, they work collaboratively, as we have in other jurisdictions, to hammer out, if they want a union, to hammer out a contract, so that it's fair for...
You know, for a lot of us, this is our home. We wanna see this place flourish. I got two young kids. I have a 12-year-old and an eight-month-old, and he's gonna grow up going to school here. And I, everything we do, we wanna make better, ultimately. You know, we, we just wanna make this place better. That's all it is, and this is how we believe we can get there.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, guys. We may have some questions for you. But Lou, a quick question for you, Lou. To make a charter change, give me the timeline, and how many public hearings are involved in that?
Well, they, they have to create the resolution, and then there has to be a public hearing. Usually, I think it's a 20-day notice for, before the resolution is presented for adoption. So, it can be done. It's just a matter of the board's decision to go forward.
Now, I...
The other issue is the collective bargaining when they refer to it. Usually, that affects the budget, and the budget's been adopted already. So, the police, their budget, their negotiations are in advance of the budget, so it can be, changes can be implemented. So, you can't do it mid-year. It wouldn't make any budgetary sense to do that, because we don't have the money allocated for that.
The question, an additional question to that is, once you go through the timeframe, I'm trying to think, you know, the election is coming up in May of 2024, so we're 10 months away from an election. And we're 12 months away from the next budget. So, I'm trying to put in, in my mind, how long it would take. I know we normally have a public hearing to start with.
Once it's, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but once it's adopted, you close it for 40 days, and I think that's 50 days.
So, it'd be 40 days after accepted, 50 days, so you're looking at, let's say, two months after that. So, I was just trying to work my timeframe.
And Mr. Mayor, and then, for us internally, there's still, so, the gentleman is correct, in that timeline, about two months, give or take. But then, there's two other pieces. There would still be some working out of the Labor Code, which would take time in addition, right? It's just, this is the amendment to allow for collective bargaining with employees. There'd be, I think, a little more work to be done around some details around the Labor Code. And then, in addition, our, the workers would have to vote, which is also days, weeks, weeks, there's notice requirements. So, all in, you know, we're talking closer to three, four months, and then, our committee would get together, begin to sit down. We don't expect instant, and again, I, I, the members will decide whatever the priorities are. So, I don't want, whatever the committee decides is what we'll bargain for, but if we're in the middle, let's say, let's pretend this all happens today, hypothetically speaking. We're talking, we're in August, September, October, November, we know the holidays are there. So, we don't start at the earliest, sitting down with the town till December, which would actually put people in line with the next budget cycle, where we could work out working conditions, health and safety, other issues, and then hypothetically, whatever our committee, theoretical committee would ask for, would then, for financial asks, to your point, wouldn't happen till the next budget. We, I don't think anyone here has an expectation that everything happens instantaneously and that there's some hypothetical demand about money right now. We understand this is a process. This is, um, this is not a, this is not one shot, right? So, I don't want that concern about that anyone in this room is gonna demand a raise December 1, off-cycle. That is not our, that is not the committee's intention. That is not our members' intention. It's to get the process right and hammered out. And there's a lot of working condition issues that are really priorities too. That can be worked out before the next budget. Perfect.
I'd like to comment too, that the health and safety of workers is governed by federal and state law. That does need a collective bargaining agreement to adjust that, because if there are issues that affect the workers' safety or health, will the town itself implement measures to address those things? We need collective bargaining to do that. We can do that ourselves, because it's already governed by, as I said, state federal law.
You're right. Moche and OSHA both have oversight, absolutely. But, there could be hypothetically, workers bring up things that are happening in the town, that they, there could be a standard higher than the state and federal standard that might be in the best interest of everyone, people in the back of the trucks, whether it's in the water department or other things. I mean, I'm just speaking hypothetically. I'm not trying to tell, the committee will ultimately decide. The whole point of this whole process is that folks have a voice at work around whether, any working condition, hourly wages and stuff to negotiate with this town, where they come to a mutual agreement. And that's just where we wanna get to, where we can have an open, legally binding dialogue and process.
I would say, you know, our board is independently, we know what's, we've discussed this in some manners. So, our options up here are three options. I look at it three options. And we change the charter, pencil it in, change the charter, and you have the right to start the process. Two would be, just like the Elton Police Department did, they went out and solicited signatures by the public. Once they gained the amount of signatures that was needed, then it was put on the ballot, and then the ballot was voted upon for them to move forward. Option three would be that we just put it on the ballot and let the people vote at step three. So, that's the way I see the three options that we have in front of the board. I know, from working with the police department, from, from a budgeting standpoint, I'm fine with it, as I said. I, I like that you'll know exactly what you're gonna be getting next year, the year after, the year after that. But saying that, at our next workshop, which is next week, we have, we are having a, hosting a workshop on the pay scale, on the merit, and, and a certain amount of money, and this is, this has came from your concerns. That'll be, not introduced, but we're working on that for next week. You'll actually see that, see the, the plan in place, per se. So, I guess, I, I got it. I think we owe it to our employees to give them our opinion of which direction we wanna go here. Charlie, you're the, I don't wanna say the eldest, but you're the, the, give us an opinion here. I'm gonna put it on you first.
It, it doesn't matter. I'd like to see a, 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 to amend it so that they can move forward.
Gene?
I have such mixed feelings. I, I'm, and they change. They do change from, you know, through discussion. But, I, I guess, I'm personally disappointed that we couldn't work things out between the board, management, and our employees to make everybody happy. Soon as we, you know, heard what we did, we started working on a merit system, which is, in my opinion, is long overdue. It makes sense. You have to know what you're going, what you're making, where you're going, and how to get there, you know, through evaluations and whatnot. And I was hopeful that that was your main issue. I was hopeful that that would be the start of talks to get us where we all wanna be. If you all wanna pay dues for the right to talk to us, when you already have that right, well, go for it. That's, I'm like, you know, that's up to you. We try to save you money. We try to always be, approach things with open ears and open eyes. But, if that's what you want, I'm not gonna stand in your way, you know? It's majority rule. And, you know, I understand that. But on the same token, I'm here representing the citizens of Elton. So, what I decide is going to affect them. It might be in your benefit, but I have to know that it's also in their benefit. Therefore, I'm leaning towards letting them do the voting at the next election, I guess. And how we put a referendum there, I'd be, I'd be willing to work, you know, in that. I know the police had to go out and get their signatures. You almost wanna say what's fair for one is fair for all. But, I'm flexible, you know? I can, I can listen to more arguments. But I still think that I'm not empowered to make that decision for the citizens of Elton, because I've already got multiple emails that tell me they don't want it. But that's just a small, it's just a few, you know? And I can't let my decision be affected by a few. I think, again, majority rules. And therefore, I think the majority of our citizens should stand behind it, because it will affect them. It will affect a lot of things. And then we can all go away happy. And that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Gene.
Well, you know, I spoke the last time you guys came in, and most of you knew where I stand with this, as far as like, I represent the citizens. You guys are citizens. You guys are employees of the town, and I respect both citizens and employees. Your rights are, you know how I feel about your rights. I, I want everyone to be treated with respect, and everything that goes along with respect is the way I would expect to receive it. What I'm looking at, first of all, we wouldn't be in fear if it wasn't for management, HR, and you being employees. We, as the town, we're stuck in the middle of something that should have been started from the top. Management, let it get out of control, and I'm going, just to go back to management saying, Commissioner Piner's talking about you guys. It's not that. It's in any kind of department, I mean, any kind of business. Management starts first. If that's not actually given the respect when you guys coming back to work, then it seems like the town, the merit commissioners don't care. That's, that's a totally wrong statement, is the town commissioners, the mayors, we do care. And that, we don't know anything about your respect until you guys come to us. I've talked to many of you personally, one-on-one, and told you how I feel about certain things. I would go and, and challenge it to administration and tell them, I heard this and I heard that. But yet, we were told, we can't make that decision. It has to be from management. Now, again, I'm sticking on the management, HR. I think that control with what we've talked about in the last meeting, and hopefully it'll come out, what our input is, hopefully will change the whole conflict of this unionizing and all that stuff. Again, like Mayor said, to me, I want what's best for you guys. I don't care which way you guys wanna go, or how you go to, to make your point. The respect still has to come from us, our management and HR. So, either way it goes, you're still gonna be stuck with the respect coming from those departments, okay, regardless. As far as the voting part, if it goes to a referendum, then what would so be? It's just that, I don't wanna be the one to say, we're gonna jump the gun just because something's already on the book, and say, we're gonna give something to you guys, that I don't know the process after that. I'm just saying, you guys work it the way you have to work it to make yourself possible to be happy with your decision. But, I don't wanna come back, Commissioner Piner, and say this turned this way because we didn't...
So, I think it's important to remember that, that when the police did do this, like as Matt talked about last time when we were here, employees, some of them still here from back at that time, tried to do this. And when they tried to jump on with the police, their jobs were threatened. They were told they would be fired, and that killed everything for them. So, they did try to avoid it. But also, this process, we're not trying to avoid the, or avoid the residents. This process still allows them to have a voice and still speak on this, and...
So, you, you made a statement just now, that their job was threatened. Where, as the mayor and commissioners, where do we have any right to do anything with that part, except for management and HR? Where management did that? HR, something should have been brought to attention, that this statement was made to me as an employee, because I questioned that. And then, there should have been some actions taken then. There's my point I'm making. Management and HR should have took care of that. So, we wouldn't be sitting here today if it wasn't for that.
But, sir, that's also why often people want to union, is they need a buffer because of the fear, threat of reprisal. And look, some people, it's too much for them to confront the top boss or HR about a threat like this. And that's why we have unions as a buffer and to be an intermediary to help move it along. And then, to Jeremy's point, again, the process is simply saying, people could have collective bargaining. It doesn't guarantee anything. There's still a process for which, as was said, there's postings, there's meetings here where the town can speak up and issues can be raised. And then ultimately, if then the workers decide, right, like, this doesn't guarantee a union or people even bargaining, that the workers, that we have an overwhelming majority, would have to vote affirmatively and say, yes, we want a union, and then the process. So, there's nothing being skipped, and there's still choice and agency for the workers. Like you said, Commissioner Dromell, you know, if people want it, they want it. But if they don't, they can, they can say, you know what? Everything's been straightened out between now and then, and, and they can choose not to participate.
What happens after, say they get the union, and they're all in, everybody's got it, then they find out they don't want it anymore. What happens?
There's, you know, that's all spelled out in one of the probably things in Labor Code, right? There's a process for which, first of all, just to be clear, you know, under a recent ruling, people can choose to be a member or not, but they would be covered by the contract. So, not everyone, it's not like working at the GM plant where everyone is a member and compelled to do everything. So, there, there is agency for people to vote dissent and choose to participate or not, just to be crystal clear. But, that's all putting the cart before the horse. We're simply asking that you all have in code a law that says some subset of workers can have the choice of collective bargaining.
But I'm simply asking you, Jeremy pays dues for a year, and he goes, what am I paying for? I'm, I'm...
He, he then can choose...
What does he do?
He can choose to drop the unions and not do it.
He can. That was my question.
Yes.
Okay, easy peasy, right? We, we, we don't...
There's no compulsory to your...
To anyone?
To anyone.
Or even as a group?
Correct. And, and just to be clear, what we're asking, right, is simply that you already have a process. It's in place. You've acknowledged it's working. We're simply asking for the other group of workers to have that option for said process, and then they will decide what they do, right? Not me. It's all these folks in here who will, who, as you acknowledged, are both taxpayers and workers, to make that decision. And that's where it really lies. There's no shortcuts, because there's still a process in front of the commission and in front of the public that can be sorted out.
Rob?
First of all, you all know how much I respect you. I think that our EPD is great, and you do a fantastic job for the town. Thank you very much. As far as the, the union is concerned... As far as the union is concerned, you know, I know that there are pros and cons for you as well as for the town. I hope that the language written up would, you know, we'll have to go over that carefully, right?
Of course, sir.
Have to go over that carefully. But like Commissioner Drumel said, I don't believe that this should be in our hands alone. I think this is, should be put out for a vote with the town and see what they think. I'd like to see the overwhelming response, one way or the other, from the town.
So I'm listening, I'm still not sure where we're at, you know, listening from all sides, but maybe this might help all of us. So on August 23rd, we have our next meeting. On August 23rd, could we advertise that we're going to have a public hearing to talk about collective bargaining for our employees? And let's see what the turnout is going to be like, of course, for the public. Now, I want to have two meetings. I want to have one at noon, like we normally do, and I'd like to ask the board if they would be available for August 23rd at 6:00 p.m. You're out of town.
September?
What about the first meeting in September for the second one?
September 6th?
September 6th?
I'm available either.
Or when are you going out of town? The 21st, because we could have, and you're going for a couple months. So you're leaving the 21st? I think it's a little too quick to ask for next Wednesday. So let's do this. We're going to have a public hearing on collective bargaining here on the 23rd, and then we'll have another public hearing on the first Wednesday, but at 6:00.
Okay, so the first Wednesday at 6:00 p.m.?
Yep.
That's going to be September 6th?
September 6th. And that'll probably be the one that wore the public. And I can tell you, if the, we got to give them an opportunity to speak, right? And what I could say to you is you should fill the room with supporters, right? You know the plan. And if there's naysayers...
I don't foresee the public showing up, but...
I don't foresee them showing up neither.
They don't show up for public meetings.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, but Mayor just said August 23rd. I don't have a meeting scheduled for August 23rd. You want to have an additional, you want to have a special meeting on August 23rd?
Yeah, it's not a normal meeting day.
Correct.
Okay. We got an extra, an extra Wednesday.
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay, so let's put it this way. Could we do them both on the 23rd?
So do you want to...
Could we have a special meeting on Wednesday, the 23rd?
Earl's not here.
Oh, Earl's not here. So forget about that.
Okay. So September's, I just want to make sure that...
Okay, I just had my dates a little off.
I thought you'd leave me out for...
So listen, let's do this. So I'm going to bounce this all around. So right now, we're two weeks away from the 16th, right? So on August 16th, August 16th, at our regular meeting, we're going to have on the agenda collective bargaining rights for our non-sworn personnel. That's going to be at noon. And then our special meeting, we're going to have on September 6th at 6:00 here. And then I can promise you, I think we'll be in a little bit better position to make a decision, final decision.
September 16th.
I think, and listen, and that gives, that gives our residents an opportunity, two meetings, to come in, and I think we'll feel a little bit better. I agree with Jean. They probably won't even be here. And my decision, I know what my position is, I'm okay changing the language right now. Once again, it doesn't, the group, after they see the wage scale change next week, they might look at it and say, hey, we don't even need to go down this road, right? And that's kind of our hope. When I say our hope, but once again, I want, you guys are going to be happy. It'll be next week, workshop. So he should have, he should have it prior to the done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, you can pull her off, but I'd like to ask her a question about the pro forma. Did you receive the pro forma information for Sideline?
I got it.
Ask her to unbeat herself. Let's begin there. Okay, I'm sorry I interrupted, but I'm sure we can get...
She went to Davenport.
And she has...
Hello, Kimberly?
Hello.
Hey, listen, a real quick question for you. We're going to pull off of the agenda the Resolution 102023 Southfield's RMA amended supplement resolution. And why was that pulled?
Hey, we got a last-minute change to it. So I pulled it out until that change can be considered into exhibit A, and then vetted by council.
Perfect.
Because it was a last-minute thing, so we're changing that.
Okay.
Went at the meeting, the next meeting, and...
So that's fine. So, but Kimberly, I do have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
Okay. Did you receive the pro forma from Sideline Sports? Did you have an opportunity to review?
I did. I had a chance to look at that, which actually helped with some of the comments that I prepared to the term sheet for the sideline deal. I submitted that to Davenport for their review because we had had a discussion about it. And I have all of the changes set up and comments and suggestions, ideas for ways that the town can be protected on the financial side, but still supporting the project. And so Davenport's reviewing that. I actually just checked in with them because the idea is, once I get their thumbs up on that, or they may have other kind of financial side suggestions, then I'll send it over to Lewis and the town, and with your consent, can then send it over to Christian and his folks to take a look and review.
Perfect.
But the pro forma did help answer a lot of questions. I do think that there's some ways that the pro forma, like with how the construction costs are working and the debt service reserve fund, just kind of make sure we line that up so the debt service reserve fund is covered there, which is a component of the pro forma that has to do with the costs of the project, not necessarily the income profile of the pro forma, which was the other pieces that I wanted to see to make sure that the flow of funds works. Because the most important piece from the town's perspective is the waterfall and what gets paid when. For example, you're going to want operating expenses to get paid first from the revenues because if you don't have an operating sports flex, then there's no income, right? Like, that's an easy no-brainer. But then there's also questions about, you know, what share, you know, when this town could get reimbursed for any funds that it might lay out if it has to, you know, how the debt service reserve fund gets funded. You know, I put in your suggestion, Mayor, that, you know, we start out with, I believe that was your suggestion, where we start out with the debt service reserve fund and then gradually increase it from revenues of the project to increase the protection of the town. As an example, that's the kind of stuff. So that's just about ready to get over to you guys. I've just been waiting for Davenport's thumbs up on that, and they, you know, should be able to get that to me pretty quickly. And then we can keep going from there. The pro forma was, in a very long answer to your short question, I did receive it. I did take a look at it. It did answer my question.
Okay, that's perfect. Because I think we're all itching to keep the ball rolling forward, right?
Yes, absolutely.
And is there any, is there a, well, I guess we should probably, the due diligence here is to make sure council looks at the term sheet, makes it correctly before we move forward. Is that correct?
I think so. And I think there will be some discussion topics that will arise from my comments because there were some ideas in there that I had. For example, you know, how does the management fee get treated? Because there's a profit component to it, and then there's the payroll component to it. Obviously, you need to pay people salaries. And, you know, maybe that gets, you know, contributed as security and get paid out when the project's meeting, you know, a coverage ratio so that if everything's healthy, then, you know, the profit flows along with the payroll. It's just examples like that from other transactions that I've worked on, on how to, you know, deal with the waterfall of funds, you know, not supporting any one person more than the other. Obviously, we want people to get paid and feed their families, but more of how we are making sure that, you know, if there's kind of gravy at the end, how does that get managed and dealt with, you know, while still protecting the town's support and investment in backstopping the project, you know, over the term. And then I also included what you talked about, and they suggested what Sideline, you know, also seemed to agree to, which was having these, what we call super-sinker bonds, where, you know, extra money can be used to pay back the debt service, things like that. So those are all, I think, stuff there may be one more or two back and forth with once they take a look at that and have their suggestions and ideas to what Davenport and I would put together as, you know, ways to structure this so that everybody's, you know, the project's getting done, but the town is also getting protected as much as possible.
Perfect. Absolutely. Thank you, Kimberly.
All right, so y'all can look at that, you know, for that, for me, I'm hoping this week, because I did send it late last week to them, and, you know, it's what, Wednesday today, so I should get it soon because I know they had a couple of things stacked up.
That'd be wonderful. I want to start kicking a ball on that turf.
I know. I mean, the Brendan's are very pretty, right?
Yeah.
I spent many a weekend at those places, let me tell you.
Well, we're going to have you in Elton quite a bit. We're going to have you here in Elton.
That'd be great.
This would be great. Thank you.
So I'm guessing that doesn't mean you don't need for anything else, Louis? I looked at their change. It is cleanup. So once we get that in the right shape, because I know you've been asking for quite a while about having the right attachments to include from Unicat, so they, I know, have produced that, but that one comment should be addressed. I agree with it. And then we can get this presented and adopted, but I don't think that's holding up anybody's timing based on where this transaction sits.
Thank you.
And I'll report back to the group this afternoon on the call if it still goes forward.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, so you finished with me?
We're finished.
All right, take care.
Thank you.
Good to see everybody.
Chris Sheen, and I see you're on the call. Do you have anything to add today?
No, no, just here to listen, here if there's anything you guys need. So look forward to seeing some comments and, you know, as I think I mentioned, you know, there will be an interim process. We will obviously collectively work to refine the term sheet into a executable financing.
Perfect. We're closed.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, let's keep that ball rolling, as they say. All righty. I think the term sheet is, it was the same thing as that memorandum of understanding they were saying. Is that correct, Louis, or am I...
No, exactly.
Was there a memorandum of understanding that we could try to get moving forward with, or is that...
I haven't talked to Kimberly about that, so it wasn't on the agenda.
Okay.
And I'm not prepared to comment on it.
Okay, well, then that was my fault. I should have asked her a little bit about that. But that's okay. I'm okay moving forward the term sheet. Ordinance 6-2023, amending the town code for title vehicles in traffic chapter 10.08. So we have this for introduction?
It is for introduction, and I've talked with Chief about it as well because the specific vehicles we wanted to address are not clearly called out in the Maryland traffic law, so of articles. So what we did, we came up adding mobile homes and/or other recreational vehicles on town and property. So this amends, as you said, Title 10, Chapter 10.08, specifically subsection 10.08090, parking on public property. We added under maximum time period, mobile homes or park model recreational vehicles. That is the closest we could come to those large bus-type mobile homes or recreational vehicles. And then we added along with that, that no trailer, boat trailer, camping trailer, fifth floor trailer, pulp trailer, semi-trailer, metal trailer, mobile home, park model recreational vehicle, as refined under the Maryland Transportation Article Title 11, shall be used by any person as a dwelling place, place of abode, or sleeping place while parked upon any street, parking lot, or other land owned by the town of Elton. And then the rest has remained the same. So those are really the only changes, and it'll be presented at the next meeting, the 16th, for adoption if it's approved for any questions.
Do we have a motion to approve or introduce Ordinance 6-2023?
So moved.
Any discussion on this? You know, when I first read it, I was going to question about on any town street, but then I guess I missed the sleeping place.
Yes.
So that was very important to have in there, the sleeping place. Any other discussion?
You said it doesn't affect the changes for people that own their own vehicle parked at their own house.
Correct.
So it's not sleeping in it?
Well, it's that...
Or living in it.
Or living in it.
And that's part of the property is going to...
Or what it would be out.
That's right. Oh, okay. We have a motion, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Do we need to sign one?
No. That's...
Okay, I skipped right over the fire company discussion of ordinance, or Resolution R92023. So this is placed in front of everybody. This is just, I want you to review it, and we're going to have it available for, I won't be at the next meeting, but this will be in front of you guys to take a look at and discuss at the next workshop, which is the next meeting. And there's, we need to, I think we had it the next meeting, did we push it to September?
Well, actually, we hadn't made that, you hadn't made the decision.
Yeah, there's a lot of questions in here. You know, we created the language, and then I spoke to Steve at Finance today. There's a lot of moving parts. When the assessments go up, of course, the dollars jump up. And if we put specific rates in, then what happens then? The amount of revenue could double far greater than what we really are shooting for.
Yeah, but how does this, how does this address what we aren't supposed to allocate?
Well, I think...
I'm confused.
Well, what this states, shall allocate a portion, but it doesn't, by putting it in this way, my concern was when I first looked at this, and I think we need to talk about it at the workshop. But my concern was, you already, you have a rate in there. Are we removing the rate that's in the charter, or is this just...
The first amendment I suggested to the board was to remove the 1.2 cents per hundred of the tax levy, because that's pretty finite in terms of like 166,000 this time around. It's just based on that rate times whatever the assessment is. So if you, the other ordinance I put in there for the 369, that gets more complicated because you can, under the same assessable base that we have now, you can generate close to 400, 800, and 1.2 million dollars over the next three fiscal years. But as Chief, as we all know, as the assessments go up, that'll work too. The rate is finite, but the assessment isn't.
Right.
So that could change. So the other, the alternative is to have the mayor and commissioner just include a figure in the annual budget for what we're going to do, because that could be the flexibility. And given the economic situation we may be in...
I was, I was...
I was, I was worried about that very thing because like when all these projects that we have on the on the books start coming to fruition, the tax base is going to increase and that, that could really affect us a lot. And that was one of my concerns, actually, but not having something in here seems.
That puts your thoughts probably in orders either way.
How can we, can we cap it?
I, I think what what the concern is, what I see is the next mayor in two years could say, we're not putting anything in the budget.
Exactly.
And also they could amend the charter to eliminate.
Which is.
So this all, the governing body can take any number of things to do that either fund or don't fund. If you are a company or anything else for that.
I didn't even really like the idea of saying, well, we're going to fund a third of the budget because anybody can have their budgets, right? I'm not saying they would, but I'm just saying it's possible.
That's true.
So, you know, all of a sudden where they need to have a three million dollar budget, all of a sudden they've come up with a five million dollar budget. So, you know, that's not logical to me either, but I would hope that we could come up with something that we could, that's finite of a minimum of what we, our intention is, and then maybe find a way to cap it, never to exceed.
The way to do it, you currently have a one point two cents.
Yes, I know.
For a hundred is.
But if we, but if we change it, it can be affected by the increased tax base.
It's always been that way. It's always been that way.
So maybe we keep that.
Every year it's changing because of the.
True, that's true, that's true.
Maybe we just add the language. We, we keep the percentage of point oh one two in there and then you add the town show, allocate a portion of its real estate could, shall, or I don't know how you could do that.
What do you mean in addition to that?
In addition to it.
You can put that in there.
Yeah, let's kind of think about that, but let's talk about that in the next meeting. But you have the work here in front of you. We have some time because we can't, we.
Will you be at the workshop?
I won't be.
Huh?
I won't be.
You won't be at the next, okay. But you'll be here on the twenty-third.
That's correct.
Okay.
But there's no meeting on the twenty-third.
There's no meeting on the twenty-third. I'll be here on the sixteen. I'll be here on the sixteen.
I'll see you on the sixteen.
Earl won't be here on the.
Well, it's confusing. There's five Wednesdays this month and.
Okay, now the sixteen.
The twenty-third feels like it should be a third.
So you won't be at the workshop?
I won't be at the workshop next week, no. You guys got it? They should only wait a meeting. There's no hurry in this. There's really no.
No, well.
There's no hurry, you know, there has to be something in place by the next fiscal year.
Yeah, you're, you're.
We're way ahead of game here.
You lied, so you do have plenty of time.
So let's put it on the workshop for September.
September thirteen.
Earl, you going to be here?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right, so let's move on to the Elton Alliance request for waiver of alcohol for the downtown car show on August seventeenth. Lou, is that you?
Yeah, that's, that's day one, August seventeenth, five to eight for the Elton Cruise, um, Car Cruise. Obviously, that's a very popular program, so I would recommend that that, our quality waiver restriction be waived to that event.
We have a motion to approve the request.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Lou, anything else on your report, sir?
The only thing I want to mention is the Southfield's Tower is taking shape now and I sent a picture to the board. They have the bottom bowl on, so we'll be starting, they work on eight on six off. They're going off today and then they come back next week and I'll start putting the top on, so you'll see a new shape out there.
It's amazing, isn't it?
They don't play ball yet, but it's a little wave off.
It's getting close. Let's play ball, Elton. Mayor, I think we should just put my face up there. Can I make a motion? Can I get a motion to put my face on the tower? Oh, it's a lack of, lack of support, I see.
I'll try and take other places to put it.
Oh, Lordy.
You made Michelle leave.
Yes. She took off, okay. And we've got a lot going on. I mean, I, I think everyone that's sitting in the room can see we've got a lot of balls we're trying to juggle and there is a lot going on in the town of Elton and this is some trying times for us up here. So the Chief, I want to apologize to the first night out that I didn't attend last evening.
We did miss you and.
You didn't miss me between the probably the five thousand hot dogs you gave out. Can you give us a little report on it? What did, what was the crowd like? I know it had to be huge.
We did have a big crowd. I don't know if it was the largest we've ever had, but they were definitely one of the best crowds we've had, very engaging. We retired our two canines last night, had an official ceremony with that. We appreciate Commissioner Piner with his CJ skills and and having everything set up for us so that we could even do this in the field on the other side of the park. I'm sorry I didn't get to see Commissioner Gibbons.
I'm sorry.
I was there, I know you were there, but we did not get to interact. It was very, very busy. But we had a great group. I appreciate our governor's office, protect coordinator there helping us. He spent with a couple of my staff, you know, he was on a committee that helped to plan it. He went and got, we had so many donations, I mean, everybody really stepped up in this community and even outside. We had hot dogs, Berks gave us like, I don't know, seven hundred and fifty hot dogs.
Seven twenty.
Seven hundred and twenty hot dogs. Locally, we had grocery outlet running, I mean, just so many people and then a lot of service providers. We had changing tides therapy there, Girl Scouts, the State's Attorney's Office, Cecil Mediation, Voices of Hope. We had, I can't even think of everybody that was there, Casa. I mean, it was just awesome to see. Of course, everything sprayed through the public. We had our, this year we got shirts so people knew who the staff event, the event staff was, so if they needed anything. Millworth's Orgias actually had two employees come out and did the whole gay ride for us. We didn't even have to to worry about that part of it. We had the Life Flight there, DNR, Singling, like all of our rental partners, it was amazing. It's always a good time, loved it. It's just great to interact with people in that non-stress environment where everybody's just coming together to have a good time. And that's what it was. They did, we did tug of war, cops against kids.
No.
Well, it was eight oh five, so actually it was over. The very first one, the kids won, and they did not rat them, those cops didn't rat them either, they won. Second one, I actually jumped in on that one, so we had a little bit more, I was the only one that jumped in, but so then the cops won, we had a tiebreaker and and then the cops won that one, but I'm going to tell you, it was everything they had. You should have seen Jacob Brown, he was our, he was our anchor. He had a big cowboy hat on, he was the anchor, he was crawling trying to hold him up. It was really good. We were, I manned the the obstacle course for part of the night and the kids all wanted to start racing each other because there's two lanes, so we were doing that. And then a couple of them were like, I want to race against Officer Ryan. So I happened to pull him over and then he went through a couple of times right away with the kids racing up and I'm like, nobody trees, please. And then, then the other kid wanted to race and I said, all right, he's got long legs, let's get a shorter one. So then Officer Salisbury came over and raced. So it was just really good, a really good time.
Oh, my heart's broken, I couldn't be there.
I know.
I really.
I know, it's always around your birthday that you.
That's the first one I've missed in years. I'm sorry, I just couldn't get out of my own patience.
We got next year, right?
We got next year.
Trying to expand on it and it's, it was good, it was really good.
Next year.
So thank you all. And listen, I'm, I do, I'm glad you had me in that opportunity because I did want to thank everybody for letting us do that, but we actually have a community interview for Sergeant Position Board that's well scheduled at once, so.
Perfect.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Okay.
Mayor. Oh, yeah, the Alliance was there too. I'm sorry, I didn't mention you.
Chief, please tell your officers what a great night it was and how well they were.
I will, thank you, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Rob, you have anything tonight?
I didn't, you know, but just before I got here, I got a phone call from a young lady, friend of mine, and her daughter, she told me her daughter's going to buy the Palate of Peach.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, I said, is this something that I should not announce right away? She said, no, she said, it's okay. She owns the arts and crafts place in.
Art Den.
Rising Sun Art Den. So you know about it. I figured you would. But anyway, yes, she's going to be purchasing the Palate of Peach. Wonder how the owner of the building feels. That's great. Hopefully she'll bring some of the activities that she does at Rising Sun downtown. They do glass glowing and other activities up there that that would go over well down here. So that's exciting news and.
I might this week where you can go in and, you know, do the painting, you know, take your child or some, I don't know, I think it'd be just a cool thing to do. I don't drink wine, so it doesn't matter if I sip and paint or not.
Jean, have you done that?
Um, I, I did quick, what, is there any status on the Underwood project? That's what I call it.
Uh, Jean Minner, let me get her to unmute. There she is.
Jean, Jean asked you a question, is there any report on the Underwood project, but I don't know if you could announce anything in the public on the other or not?
Yeah, I believe I can. It, it was alluded to in a DNR newsletter. So Underwood assisted the town of Elton in a national coastal resilience grant application. And I just noticed that we were awarded, we were awarded something and I contacted the folks there and they said, yes, it's not official official yet, Noah has to sign off on it, but we will receive a hundred thousand dollars for the flood study.
Oh, that's awesome.
Now, I have to look at the scope of work associated with that grant and I believe we may have to bid out the work, so Underwood would be allowed to bid on the project, but I don't know that we can automatically engage Underwood to accomplish the scope of work until I see it.
Oh, wow. Weren't they the ones that applied for the grant?
Yes.
We, we applied jointly for the grant.
Jointly, oh, okay. Well, it's good.
Is the town's.
Gotcha.
The funding comes to the town of Elton and we would administer the grant.
That is awesome news. That's really great. And I do know that we're going to have to still address the water and sewer rates, probably sooner than later, right? So I'm, I'm looking forward to us discussing that more. I saw where, Dan, you had a pre-bid for the trash?
Yes, yes, we had a pre-bid for the trash, correct.
Yeah, what, what entities were there? Are you, can you tell me or no?
Yeah, the four entities that were at the pre-bid meeting were Waste Management, Trash Tech, Republic, and the GF, Green for Life, but they, but they're called Cascade, it's something local, but those are the four vendors who attended.
Okay.
They all got the packages, they all seemed interested in the proposal.
When, when will they have to submit that?
We'll, we'll have, we'll have a reading of the, the meeting on the sixteenth, but then we still have to review it after that when we make final recommendations, when you have the numbers. We'll publicly read it on the sixteenth.
Okay, I was curious who, who actually was there, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Dan, there's a note that I received that there's a basketball goal laying down at one forty-eight, Ben Ball Ball on common ground. Also, you may see another basketball goal that is standing upright, but I think it was referred to the one that was lying down, it's on common ground. Did you receive email and reference to that from, from anyone?
We got something, we got something about it this morning. I'll still check with code enforcement, make sure it doesn't involve anybody, but we can make it disappear.
Well, code enforcement, that's who I talked to, talked to prior to this meeting, so I just wanted to connect with you on that email that they sent you. So make whatever decision that's necessary.
Thank you, Charles. Earl?
Park and Recreation update for summer of twenty twenty-three. Our summer camp began on June the twentieth and will continue through August eighteenth. We have an average of about one hundred and twenty campus registered each day with some days over a hundred and forty children registered. We also have welcomed Judy, Judy Center Playground every Tuesday for playgroups for toddlers. We offer a basketball camp in July that was over thirty children registered. We continue to offer facility rentals at the community center on weekends during the summer, and we are completely, currently planning our programming for the fall and winter and are looking forward to welcome our community partners, senior programs, Kinship, Navigator Program, Girl Scout, Boy Scout, Boys and Girl Scouts, I'm sorry, Boys and Girl Club After School Program, and once our summer camp ends. They said, please let them know if there's any questions or additional information, please contact Mary. And that's it.
Yeah, on Monday, I actually did a tour of the community center with County Executive Bob Cassley from Harford County. He had his public, or his Parks and Rec Director come in and they took a real close look at our facility and they're hearing great things about it in Harford County, so I think they want to kind of copy what we're doing, which is pretty exciting, really.
Yeah, they're doing an exciting job, but actually, I guess we built it the best way it could, the funds we had, but certainly we could have had an enhanced project more so than than what we're actually doing it now.
Yeah.
But Louis did a good job planning it, so we can't take that away from him. You never know what's going to happen until you build it.
Nope, you don't. It's being well-used right now. Okay, this is time we open up the floor for anyone out in the audience that has anything to say? Yes, sir, come on down, tell us your name, address, social security number, and you can leave your debit card.
Chris, Pet's first name?
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor, good afternoon, Commissioners, town administration and Chief Rogers, we're just doing good. So my name is Aaron Wright, I'm the manager of Voices of Hope. So just a little update, well, one, I just wanted to say, listen, I, I am very grateful of what you guys do. I know it's a busy time, but I do see a lot of good things happening in the town of Elton, so I want to show my gratitude and express it. You know, you guys are doing a good job, you know, right, people are stressful right now. So one of the things that we have now, and it was the Hope, and thanks to Sheriff Adams, is anybody that leaves CCDC, so Cecil County Detention Center, that does not have a ride home, we have now a poster, which I will pass out.
Hey!
So get a, get a ride free from jail card, so we will come pick them up and take them to the next destination.
Thank you.
There'll also be cards given out because we know that long walk from CCDC to Wawa, a lot of things can happen in that walk, so that will give them the chance to be able to access all of our resources that we do within this community and talk to their special dislocations related to them.
Aaron, I wonder if you could post one of those in the district courthouse? Also.
Great idea, yes.
Because that's, that's one of our, our dilemmas that we have, and I really appreciate this service. This is, some of the things that we've heard in the past was that we've always said this that whether you're Perryville Northeast, Rising Sun, when they bring the criminal or the person, not, that's probably the wrong word, the person that may have broke the law, they bring them in and they go in front of the court commissioner, the police officer leaves. So the person that may or may not have broken the law, in some cases, they don't have a ride to get back to their destination, and they're okay with it. They're okay by leaving them here, and this is great. And I know out of the detention center, as you stated, only bad things can happen when you're walking from that detention center and you're going through a very hotspot of an area over to that Wawa, a lot of things could, really appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir, please state your name, address, phone number.
Yeah, you can say.
Yes, sir. Please state your name, address, phone number. You can say it from here.
Oh, my name's Tom Helferch and one fourteen cars don't drive in Elton. And I've lived here quite a few years now. I'm a transplant from St. Louis, so I still have Missouri in my blood. I'm not afraid to say anything if people tell me sometimes, just shut my mouth. But that's not the way I am. I, a lot of things happened today at this meeting that kind of got my attention a little bit. This union, I'm not gonna have a meeting anymore, but I'm here. I won't, I'll be out of town probably.
Yep.
But anyway, I'll make a comment. I, for most of my adult life, I managed thousands and thousands and thousands over the year of union employees and many management employees I managed over the years. And I know there's pros and cons. The management and the, I use the word A's, and there's same thing with the union people. You're gonna have union people abuse it, just like you're gonna have management people abuse the union people and vice versa. So you need to keep that in mind. There's a lot of things, unions formed many, many years ago, probably your father or my father, or a couple of things, health and safety, things in the world. So let's think about that a little bit. Everybody's not gonna win. You know, not everybody wants to be in a matter of what they say here.
Mm-hmm.
You know, excellent employees. I work very closely, as you all well know, with every one of those employees here, most of them over the years because of my business, management and employees. And they're great employees. I could walk up to them now and tell them, hey, would you pick this stick up out of my yard? They would. That's how you get along with people. And there's some who just like to ride down the road and so be. But anyway, that's one thing that I see here. We need to talk about, get involved with maybe some local union representatives that are retired around here from maybe car companies, GM, Ford, Chrysler. Get involved with them. They'd be more happy to give you to know what's going on. Might help, help them. So a lot to learn.
Yes.
Lot to learn. The other thing I have is one of my pet peeves, code enforcement people, wherever they are in this town, I guess they do a good job. I used to know them all pretty well. I don't know them anymore because I got away from it. But I'm back. A pet peeve of mine is walking or driving through a neighborhood and I see a foot and a half of grass and someone's lawn. I remember when I used to get a call, would you go cut it for us? Because you guys are so busy. And I would do that. I'd go, I'd drive around Elton. When I came back, I'd drive around Elton, almost every neighborhood. I see grass that tall. Joe Golds, I cut his grass. So what are we doing with, who's enforcing that code? They're not gonna cut it. If you, if PW is not gonna cut unless they're told to cut it. And you know, we send letters out, if I'm not mistaken. Does that happen?
Yeah, my, my understanding, we still are sending letters out. Hey, Dan, we got you on there. Let me ask Dan real quickly a question, if you're still on there. Dan, are you getting requests to cut yards still?
Yes. Oh, yeah. It starts with Chip. Chip will talk about the letters first and then it comes down to us. Yes.
Perfect. So, so I think the process is still working, but hopefully we'll get out there a little quicker when we say. That grass grew crazy the last couple of weeks.
It's gonna be great.
Yeah.
The other issue is vehicles parked in the street. I can take an empty neighborhood in Elton and I can see cars, trucks parked in the street and don't move for weeks and weeks and weeks on end. I see cars that got out of state license plates. I got a car that had the last kind of license plates on it that ended this week in three years and ain't moved. I have grass growing underneath it, right under everybody's face here. Earl knows who I'm talking about. What are you talking about? Real close to me, Earl, didn't he? And there's a, I'm just putting you on the spot.
Oh, no, you're not. I'm just listening to you.
I mean, I tell you like it is. You know that. And if you don't like it, so be it. That's the way it is. You have to sometimes talk. And I was told to keep my mouth shut today and be careful what I say. But I'm gonna say a few other little things. Those things need to be attended. Police do a great job. I see them riding around all the time. They do a great job. I appreciate it. Someone needs to go to what's his class, his ladies' head for improving your personality. I can walk up to some cops in town and I say, good morning. They go, who are you? I talk to everybody. You can't say good morning to me. Someone has a personality issue. And that's a reflection on this town. They represent all of us. And they do a great job. I wouldn't have their job. But they need to have a personality lesson. They really do. And I've been saying that for many, many years. You know, you walk into a place of business and whatever, you say hi, and they ignore you. Now, or out in the street, you just say hi. That makes me feel better.
Yep, it does.
It might make that guy walking down the street with that bag on his back, that old hobo going down the street that popped up long here in Elton, but you know where they come from. You know, that's another issue. We could talk about that all day. Old issues. These are things I've seen since I come back. Okay? And every major city has them, because I know I've been there too. But something needs to be addressed about that. But just parked cars on these streets, I'm particular about my place, more so than Earl's. And Earl knows my place. I keep it up. I look out for my neighbors. I look out for the whole neighborhood. That's what you're supposed to do. But these guys here need to step up a little bit, too.
I've got to document it.
Right. Got to look at that a little bit. And I guess that's all I'm gonna say now.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome. Thank you for letting me say.
Anyone else have anything to say this evening? Or is it afternoon? Okay, on the Zoom meeting, does anyone have anything to say on the Zoom? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.